We're on the one minute. I'm on my phone.
Oh, okay.
This is kind of... It's one minute fast. It's one minute fast. I'm waiting. John corrected me. I wanted to start two minutes ago. Okay. Now we can. Good morning. Welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission. March 23rd, 2016. All public hearings are scheduled for certain times or as soon thereafter as matter can be heard. All non-timed items will be considered following the public hearings or when time permits. Persons wishing to speak on any of the agenda items who have made a political contribution of more than $250 to any commissioner in the last 12 months must indicate this when speaking. Roll call, please.
Dong?
Here.
Commissioner Milley did advise us that he would be absent today. Elliot?
Here.
BS?
Here.
Whitlatch? Absent. Pilianno?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Approval of the minutes of the March 9th. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Roll up, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Pilianno?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay.
Let the record show.
Parcel map, public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda... Oh, yeah. Did we do approval of minutes?
Yes, we just did.
Yes, thank you. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. Tentative parcel map number PPM 15-043. Rigorio and Sandra Murgaya. James Winton and Associates. Categorical exemption and tentative parcel map. And waiver of final map. Do we have a... Open the public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there... Are there any comments? Or against this project? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve a category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation. Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to the limited number of new small facility and structure and conditionally approved a partial map number 15-043 and waiver the final map.
I'll second that.
The vote?
Dong?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pilianno?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we have a public hearing. Special use permit number PSP 15-057 and tentative parcel map PPM 15-042. Ross and Tammy Williams, Forrester, Weber and Associates. It's a categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP 15-057 to allow one agricultural service establishment and a division of land resulting in parcels containing less than the minimum acreage required and two tentative parcel map PPM 15-042 to divide a 40.35 acre parcel into two parcels. The parcel one and two is located in the AE20 exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum zone. The site is located on the north side of Avenue 396 between Road 88 and Road 92 south of Dinuba. Our contact this morning is April Hill. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Pacheco and Commissioners. The applicant asks for the use permit to park equipment on part of a 1.97 acre home site that will be created as... By the parcel map. That parcel map qualifies for a final map waiver and an exception from the subdivision ordinance. Here's the location of the site, south of Dinuba. This is an aerial showing the subject parcel that has an orchard surrounding a single-family home, a larger metal building for storing and office for the business, a smaller building and driveways and parking area that are paved. They've been there since about 1993 and aerials show the same configuration of the site. The site's under Williamson Act contract and so a partial non-renewal will be required for the home site have to be signed and completed before the map resolution is recorded. Here's the site plan showing the proposed parcel sizes, 1.97 acres for the home site and business and about 30 acres for the orchard. Special use permit will allow a storage and... Of a truck and equipment on about one and a half acres of the 1.97 acre parcel, number The applicant is a sole employee, lives in the residence on the site, takes his truck and shredding equipment to each orchard and shreds the tree prunings on their property and leaves the shredded material there. There is no shredding on this site, no composting, no storage of wood products, just the equipment. No business expansion is expected. Here's the frontage of the site. Home on the... Home over here, this is the driveway through to the ag service, very well screened by the orchard. Subject site's AE20 zoning requires a conditionally approved special use permit for ag service establishments, even if it's just storage of equipment, and requires... And for a division of land resulting in parcels containing less than 20 acres for existing ag-related industries. Both parcels have direct access to county-maintained Avenue 396 and Public Works has recommended that 10 feet of additional right-of-way be dedicated to the county across the frontage. The site is not within an urban development boundary or urban area boundary and is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan designated for valley agriculture. And the project is consistent with relevant elements of the general plan. Regarding biological resources, the California Natural Diversity Database shows no species of concerns, waterways, or wetlands in the area. And regarding cultural resources, the site's not on a bluff or a hillside with rocky outcroppings, not likely to contain artifacts. No expansion, again. A public notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject site and published in the Visalia Times Delta with a 10-day public comment period. No comments were received before the hearing. This ends staff's report. And the agent is in the audience if you have any questions.
April, this is... They didn't have a use permit. Is that... This is bringing them into compliance?
Right. No violation was...
So they've been in business since '92?
'93, yeah.
Yeah, and without any complaints and looked like they had a pretty nice run... A cleanly-run operation. Okay.
I'll open the public hearing. Good morning.
Good morning. Fred Weber, 1620 West Minro King with Forrester, Weber and Associates. Just, we concur with staff on this and try to answer any question that you might have.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll close the public hearing then. And do we have a motion?
Yeah, I think we'll make a motion. This looks like a good operation and it's in a good location and they've been doing a good job for a long time here, so we'll just bring them up to compliance. So, let's see. I make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and conditionally approve special use permit PSP 15-053 subject to findings and conditions.
I second it.
Vote, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pilianno?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, we have another...
Before you make the motion that we... The second motion to approve the tentative partial map number PPM 15026 and the final map waiver and the exception.
Thank you.
I second it.
Vote, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pilianno?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Project approved. Thank you. Okay. The Fresno special use permit number PSP 15-056, Fresno MSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Philip French, Executive Director, Network. Timothy Adams, care of SAC Wireless. It's a categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP 15-056 to allow a 105-foot tall self-supporting fall tree monopole. The site is located at 603 East Worth Avenue, East Porterville. Our contact is Andrew Pacheco.
Good morning, Madam Commissioner and fellow Commissioners. My name is Andrew Pacheco. I'm with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency. The applicant here has requested an application for a 105-foot phlox tree monopole. It's self-supporting and it'll have eight... Excuse me, 12 8-foot panel antennas, 12 remote radio units, four ray caps, two GPS antennas, and two 6-foot diameter microwave dishes. And this will be enclosed in a 40-by-40 fenced area, 8-foot fence, chain-link fencing. And there will be a 30K generator backup unit with 132-gallon diesel fuel tank on-site. Okay. The site there is located just south of Worth Avenue, which is a county avenue of 140. It consists of three parcels. These parcels are all owned by one person. And the reason why they have three parcels is because the easement travels from Worth Avenue all the way to the south of the property to the lease site. People were notified on this project and it was posted in the Visalia Times Delta 11 March 2016. Okay. The zoning on the property is RA 217 and the surrounding areas are also AE20, RA20, and RA 217. Now, on this project right here, the city of Porterville at first opposed the application and then they rebutted and then they sent us a letter supporting the application as it was submitted with a phlox tree monopole tower. Okay. The general plan at this location, there's two designations with the city of Porterville, their general plan, GPA 14-008. Now, the north half of the property is medium-density residential, the south half of the property is low-density residential. The monopole facility will be located in the southern portion of the property, which is still zoned RA 217 by the county standards. Now, this is the view of the property itself and you can see that the easement travels from Worth Avenue all the way south and it travels through three parcels. At the very southwest corner of the property is the leased area, which you can identify there by the dotted line that's going to be the details site on the next slide. This is the facility right here and it shows that the property... I mean, that the lease site is located approximately about 74 feet from each property line. Now, the pole is located about 100 feet approximately from the property line, so there is a little bit that may fall over across the property line if it should ever fall, but that's very hard to say what's going to happen. Okay. This is how the facility will look like inside the leased area. Now, this is what the proposed tower is supposed to look like with the phloking on This is a five-mile radius of the location of that site and you can see where the cell towers are basically located to the north of Porterville. This is the one farthest south to this... Of Porterville, so it will cover more area than those other ones will. Now, this right here identifies the fall zone of the tower, should the tower ever And if you notice in the aerial photo, there's nothing all around this property. It's all vacant. The closest house is the next parcel over to the east. There are no buildings or structures within the area, so it's very fortunate that there is nothing out there. Now, Gibbons Alignment is a road. It's not really there. It's not a county road. It's an easement. That is not a county right-of-way. That's probably one of the reasons why they have the easement from Worth Avenue. Okay. This is a picture right here from Worth Avenue, Avenue 140, and that is the entryway for the facility right there. And it goes from the north all the way to the south across three parcels. It's well-maintained. Now, this is the easement from the Gibbons Alignment. As you can see, it's a dirt road. It's not maintained. It's just an easement. And this was done in the springtime, so you can see all the flowers. Okay. This is the location where the tower will be existing at this time. Just imagine that tower being, what, 90, 100 feet away from the property line each direction, and that's where it sits. This is the view to the south of the property. There is nothing out there. That bunch of trees out there is a Vendela Cemetery, so it's not close by, but everything else around there is vacant and it's in unnative vegetation at this time. Now, Verizon did send us a couple of photos on this, and this is their aerial photo and they show the identification where they took their photo simulation of the tower. Now, from Worth is number one. Number two is the picture shown from the east of the lease site. There is a tower from Worth Avenue as simulated. It has a phlox tower. Stands out. This is a photo from the east of the facility and that's what the photo's going to look like. That's what the tower should look like when completed. It looks like a redwood tree. Okay. Okay. Last of all, the species of concern, the Morrison blister beetle is there, but there have been none identified exactly on the site. It's just within the range itself. The land is fairly flat, rolling. It identifies orchards, vineyards, and native vegetation. Okay, recommendation, approve the categorical exemption and conditionally approve the special use permit. Or the alternatives, as you see, move to approve subject with modifications as discussed, move to deny, refer back to staff for further reports. And that would conclude staff's report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we...
Andrew, I have one question.
Yes.
Why was the tower sighted in such a position that it... Some of it may fall into someone else's property, should it fall? It seems like you got plenty of room to contain it.
Well, I believe that's between the owner and the Verizon people, and apparently there's nothing out there, so they didn't see any harm in that. And he's probably trying to keep his property. Okay, he does work out there. If you look at the photos, sir...
Let me ask this... Let me ask this question, then.
Yes.
Is it in such a position that it'll fall in the neighbors' or is it going to fall on the landowner that's leasing this out?
All but five feet.
All but five feet. You know, if I'm the neighbor, I mean, I've some... I've got an easement. I got a... I got a... I got a cloud on five feet of my ground out there. I don't know that I could ever use it.
Well, the neighbor... May I enter, sir? The neighbor is the city of Porterville. It's a Porterville cemetery. And they did respond and they did say that they accept the project as submitted, knowing the distance out where they're.
That's good enough for me, then.
Okay.
Folks who are planted there permanently don't care.
Don't think they're going to complain?
I don't think so.
No. And that is a cemetery. It's not developed, so it is just...
That's fine.
Okay, we will open public hearing. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Timothy Adams. I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. If you have any questions for me...
Do you have an address for...
What's that?
Do you have an address for the... For your place of business?
1851 Heritage Lane, Sacramento, California.
Thank you very much. Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I just want to make a quick comment. I mean, we approve these all over and they're... Especially the ones that are dressed up nice. We really like those. The one in Three Rivers is sitting, and I get two or three calls every month, what's going on with it? And there's nothing. Is there somebody in Verizon we could talk to about that? Same office, where are you from?
Well, I don't know best answer this. Well, I don't... I'm not Verizon.
Well, I understand that. You're a contractor.
Yeah, so some of it has to do with immediate network needs. It's typically where there's a delay. You know, they build those towers that they first need for their network in order to improve their network. A lot of the towers that are being built now are what you would call a capacity coverage, which is basically infilling gaps.
Right.
Where, you know, there's more data usage. That's what this tower is proposing to do, is to infill two separate locations as well as provide additional coverage in this area. So that's kind of why you see the delay. Otherwise, I mean, I really can't answer that on behalf of Verizon.
Well, if you had a contact at Verizon, you know, it might be someone I could...
I can have their... Probably have their government affairs person reach out.
Okay. I'd appreciate that.
Of course.
Please, the commission will have... I believe it's in another project. We'll have to contact the agent. On the... To... As well.
Is that the one on Mooney or...
No, it's in Three Rivers.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, I just... It looks nice. I hope it turns out the way they have it depicted here.
Very nice.
We didn't get any comments from the neighbors, Andrew?
No, there was no comments from the neighbors or the adjacent property owners or not even the city of Porterville after they wrote their letter. That was... Okay, we had nothing.
Thank you. We will now close the public hearing. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the categorical exemption consistent with California SEQA and SEQA Guidelines Title 14, Section 15503, Class 3, to new construction conversion of small structures and conditionally approve special use permit PSP 15-056.
I'll second.
A vote, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pilianno?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
The record reflect that the motion was carried.
Oh, sorry. The motion was carried. With all yeses. Okay. See, general plan amendment, GPA 16-002 and change of zone, PG 16001. I'm going to mess your name up. Nagi Mohammed Said. Thank you. Winton and Associates. This is a petition for a general plan amendment and change of zone on approximately 1.51 acres of Assessor's Parcel Number 302123014 and a 1.27 acre portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 302123015, a total of 2.78 acres, changing the land use designation from agriculture to general commercial and zoning designation from AE10 exclusive agriculture, 10 acre minimum, to C2, a general commercial zone. The site is located on the southeast corner of State Route 65 and Teapot Dome Avenue. Our contact is Dave Bryant.
Oh, not Dave.
It's not Dave Bryant.
Good morning, Madam Chairperson, Members of the Planning Commission, Chuck Przybelski with the Special Projects Division. As mentioned, I have a general plan amendment and a zone change before your commission today. Just a quick overview of the project. This is a change of the land use designation from agriculture to general commercial, a change of the zone from AE10 to general commercial C2. The applicant is Nagi Mohammed Said, and this is located within the Porterville urban area boundary, and it's on Teapot Dome Avenue and State Route 65. This shows the vicinity of the project along State Route 65 on this red line here, south of the city of Porterville and just southeast of the Porterville Airport. This shows the existing aerial photo of the site. You can see an existing service station on the western portion of the site and then the anticipated expansion of the service station to the east of the existing site. This is the general plan designation, which is agriculture. And the existing zoning of the site, which is AE10. I do need to clarify that the existing western parcel is zone C2, but we couldn't find it in any of our records, and the applicant provided a letter from the county itself apologizing and saying that the site is C2. So what this will do for the existing site is just to clean up that portion of the... Of that parcel and so there won't be no mistakes going forward in the future.
So that's how the service station got there in the first place, right?
That's correct. So, so this will just clean it all up and...
That's what I was wondering.
So just to clarify that. This is the existing boundaries for the Porterville area. The UAB boundary is in the blue, the UDB in the yellow, and the sphere of influence for the city of Porterville in the purple color there. And the gray is the city municipal boundary. Going on to the existing project, if the general plan amendment and zone change is approved, they are expanding the existing service station to the east. One existing pump will be removed and five new pumps and a canopy and scale will be installed. The store structure and the car refueling station on the western parcel will be... Remain. And as I just mentioned, this is a kind of a cleanup and a new zone change for the existing parcel and the new parcel. This is the site plan of the site. One of the reasons, which I'll mention later, the reason for this expansion is Caltrans is expanding Highway 65 and the interchange on Teapot Dome. The applicant is losing approximately 13 feet to the... On the east side, and they're losing one of their access points along this corridor right here on Teapot Dome. You can see the existing building and fueling station, and then you can see the additional fueling stations and scale on the eastern parcel. Okay, general plan consistency. Staff reviewed the Porterville community plan, which was updated two years ago in January. Section four, the city section, and the memorandum of understanding. And under the memorandum of understanding and general plan policy PF 4.19, an RVLP checklist is required to see if we can do the general plan amendment. This particular project reviews at six points because of the existing service station and the small size of the lot. And if it's under 11 points for the RVLP threshold, it can't proceed as a zone change and general plan amendment. One of the things I'd like to mention is compatible project design. Being within the UAB, the applicant must conform with the future sewer and water plans and circulation networks as shown on the city plan and the Porterville community plan, which this project and the site... Barmental document proposed for this because it is an expansion of an existing facility, which is less than ten thousand square feet. Be a categorical exemption per Section fifteen, three oh one E. This is the discussion about the Highway sixty-five expansion. There's a lot of text up there, but essentially, Caltrans is expanding Highway sixty-five and the intersection. The applicant is working with Caltrans to accommodate the extra thirteen feet and the, the right of way, western driveway of being removed from the site. And anyway, that's what that says. Sorry about that. The Porterville MOU, the county reached out to the city of Porterville three times during this project with the PRC, the Project Review Committee, the General Plan Initiative, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors in January, and this general plan amendment. And the county received a no comment letter, which is in your package from the city of Porterville on February twenty-second to twenty sixteen. With all general plan amendments and zone changes, this is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors by the Planning Commission. And as such, we'll make the requested action that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve the categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA and recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve general plan amendment number sixteen dash zero zero two and change the zone number PZ sixteen zero zero one. With that, this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant, Mr. Said, and his agent, Mr. Winton, is also available to answer any questions.
Questions?
What's gonna happen to the existing area?
The existing store and most of the fueling stations will remain. There's a small portion to the east where Caltrans is removing, but that's only thirteen feet. On the site plan, there is just kinda plenty of room. So that will remain mostly the same as it, as it exists right now.
He's just moving the gas pumps to the other side or?
He's expanding. So he's gonna add five, essentially diesel fueling station for, for large trucks to the east. And that, that is what the main project beyond the, the general plan amendment is.
Plus Chuck, he's losing his entrance off of sixty-five, is that right?
He's losing one of them, correct.
So that'll hinder him unless he can expand and over to the east a little bit more.
Yes.
Excuse me, do you have a, I didn't see a picture, but what was the land being used for previously?
The, the vacant land to the east is, is pretty much vacant. There's no agricultural operations or anything on that particular project. They do have pictures. I've been to the site, but I didn't put them in the program.
So Aaron, is this gonna use one of your general plan amendments up for the year?
Yes.
Usually you bundle them, you know? Okay.
Thank you. Now I'm going to open public opening. Do we have a comment from the applicant?
Morning, members of the commission. I'm Jim Winton, one fifty West Morton in Porterville. As Chuck indicated, the real trigger for this project was the acquisition of the additional right of way by Caltrans. And while it's not a lot of area, it has removed an access that provided circulation on site. I don't know if you wanna put that site plan back up, but.
Fun?
The, the, the access now is limited or removed all the way to the east edge of the concrete pad for the gas pumps. So it's, it's severely limited the onsite circulation. In addition to that, the, the thirteen foot acquisition by Caltrans on the west side of the property has really taken out the existing diesel fuel station. So he's losing the diesel fuel station. He's losing the ability to have any onsite circulation that would allow him to replace those on the site that's there. So that's the reason he's expanding to the east. The other thing is, is this is the, is, I think it's the, it will be the only other place you can, similar to this, that you can fuel large trucks is in Ducor. That would be the nearest, nearest location. So it's also felt it's something to need. And all of the new, all of the new facilities are diesel. And the existing gasoline and the, and the store will, as, as Chuck indicated, will remain as it is.
So those over on the east will all be diesel pumps?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Where, where are the, where's the fuel tanks located?
They're gonna be above ground. Right now, on that drawing, they're shown just to the east of the, the fuel islands, but a very recent site plan I got from the, the fuel, fuel station contractors has indicated they wanna move the above-ground tanks south away from where the islands are. So those will probably shift south, but they're onsite and they're the above-ground type.
That should help circulation as well then.
Yes.
And then, so all the tanks will be in one location. So the, the diesel then that'll service the pumps to the east will be located above ground along with gasoline tanks?
No, I don't think they're, I don't think they're changing the gasoline tanks. These will just be, be the diesel tanks for the new islands. And the other long skinny thing is the scale. We're gonna put a scale in along with.
So now where are the gas, where are the gasoline tanks?
They're in the area of the gas fueling station. I, I don't know if I've got them on that drawing. We topogged all the, all the lids and the, and the pillars when we did the, the topog. But they're, they're in the area of the, of the gas islands now on the existing site.
Okay, so they, they won't be changed or, and they're underground, right?
Yes.
So then you're just moving the, the diesel from where it's located now to the south and putting it above ground?
Yes.
And there'll be a containment there, uh.
There's plenty of morals than you can think.
I know it. I used to be in that business. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period. It's just so bad. Do we have a motion for this project?
I'll make a motion. We approve the category exemption consistent with the SEQA Act and recommend to the Board of Supervisors the approval of the general plan amendment one six zero zero two, change of zone number PZ one six dash zero zero one.
I'll second it.
Can we have the vote, please?
Bong?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
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 Willatch?
Yes.
Liliana?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item six, our director's report. Do we have a planning director update?
Uh, I cannot, I cannot able to attend it or address that, but as far as your report, during this upcoming fiscal year, we always put our budgets together. It was noted, we track our projects continuously, but it was noted that fourteen fifteen, that's three hundred and thirty-seven projects to be in the fiscal year, last summer, quarter twenty, that was from the calendar year. So, as well, we often have additional projects that we're currently trying to quantify, that's plenty, that were approved through community plans that are now by right. So we're already, the, the draft was warranted at that for the development potential. Along with that, we are also currently working on in earnest two community plans, an early market and two rivers. We are at the, just the inception point to begin processing the Three Rivers Community Plan. I almost forgot to say that because it's been two years in process up to date, but we, we are getting to a point where we're getting drafts and includes the environmental impact report, so. It's been a long time coming and hopefully within the next few months, we make substantial progress on that, that long-awaited community plan. Early market's the other one. And right now, we're trying to get the high school to the south on board, to the community workshops. We've learned that the high school might need some help with their environmental document, so we've offered Mr. Bear Services here to assist. So we might build a tie to the high school in the development to the north with our community plan. So it's one of our probably the largest endeavors to make as far as community plans. But we anticipate at this point, how we'll handle some before we release the IR. But that is a great effort by the staff and ourselves to get to this point.
Say to the south?
Uh, the.
The high school?
The high school's on the south part next to, across from the Dillon Southern Division that was processed earlier next to existing.
Okay, so it's on the west side of?
South, south of the side, yes.
Aaron, how do your projects, was it three forty or so? How does that compare to past years?
Uh, past years, we are, four years ago, we did a four-year charter, four-year, two hundred and sixty, so with the by ride project, we're looking at plus one hundred. But the, you know, the efficiency rating, we haven't replaced staff as quickly, so the efficiency ratings are much higher. Well, it's just about a hundred percent in total.
So you're able to stay well within budget then too, that sounds like.
Uh, that's the other part. The good thing about processing projects past years is there's less fill to them. So, yes, they are well within budget for the most part. We definitely don't think that helps to the board. I assume you can get on that second residences and stuff. So, yes, we definitely, uh.
We're good?
It's well within the flat fees. But there are always things we could do that wrong, so we're trying to keep track of that part of it.
Are, are we gonna be in a position to be able to pass efficiencies on to developers and, and make, make us look a little more attractive here?
Uh, that's the, that's what we do tout to the developers. The streamlined nature of our processing. And they do get to see it for themselves. The process is the process, you know, SEQA, if there are any roads gonna have those, but it's not gonna be on the armory's part. It's more on external courses acting on the company than anything we're doing. So yes, we try to get the process through the process within ninety days. Outland adjustments in sixty. And any of the AAs, the specialty permits in the mine modification, so. We're getting to a point now where it's pretty regular that we're doing these, those services exceptionally hard projects. And we work with the agents. I know this planning person hasn't heard them complaining for a while, so we're credible with the agents.
Yeah, I, I know things are improving now because I haven't had a call in more than a year and I used to get one a month from, from developers that, that know me and ask what's going on, so.
Yeah, if anything, we look forward to the, the developing projects that are more interesting. And more aspects to the, that involve more environmental processes as well, so. Streamlining to a business like, uh, agency.
Great.
Sure, if I can just balance a little bit, guarantee environmental plan, environment, development plan. What Aaron said pretty much summarizes what we're trying to attempt here, as Commissioner Diaz pointed out. And our relationship of streamlining the projects and getting stuff done in-house has created, created many efficiencies. The environmental component of it, especially because of staff's expertise and experience and working with our internal liaison council, we're able to, to get products out very quickly, you know, very quickly then. The process is streamlined, so we can do it much quicker than we have in the past. And that takes a double mission, you know, we have our first document, we involved it, continue to evolve the documents over time. But we're able to sell it as part of our business model in that we're able to provide environmental services. Not only that, we're also having in-house expertise to do air quality studies quicker and more affordable than most of them. But with the expertise and knowledge that what is their value district looking at? Well, I have their former SEQA person preparing these things for us. She works for us now. So before it goes to the air district, they have confidence knowing that it's gonna be done to their standard, so that it's gonna be very beneficial. Saves us a lot of money too for time-funded projects. That's one thing. The second thing too is part of that business component. The air district requires compliance with what they call Rule ninety-five ten, indirect source review. Uh, this person, Jessica Willis, was their lead person to do that. So she, we can sell that now to an applicant and say, oh, by the way, not only can we do the air quality study, we're gonna need an air district permit, Rule ninety-five ten. We have that in-house capability to build it too. And then they, uh, which is a great thing. They're ready to go to construction. Jessica Willis is certified in doing dust control plans. So when you start moving earth and dirt, Jessica can do that for you too. So we thought, not only the environmental committee and the plants there, we have that in-house capability and, as I mentioned, we have gas emissions. We have modeling capabilities. Health risk assessment capabilities. We can get that to the medical discount rate because we're not in a business to make money just to recover our costs. And we're smiling because that's what we're able to sell. We're able to say, we have this internal. And that's, that component, you know, Aaron, you know, to have, and read our public works, you know, obviously able to work, seeing what public works might need, whether we need a lot of permitting or this, we do that. We have a lot of connections, great working relationships with a bunch of agencies out there who trust us and know that we're gonna give them product, or, you know, it's, it's gonna meet their standards. And, you know, I go back to Mr. Swann, originated and, and watch to continue that effort. So we think it's a really great team. That, in a couple of projects that Aaron mentioned, we were able to literally sell the, our, do the, uh, DEIR and bring in the early market high school under the umbrella of DEIR. That's, we, we're gonna have, we'll call it a program, it's called Project DEIR, where we have a big community, but each discussion, each resource is gonna have that analysis of how that high school is gonna impact that resource. So they like that, you know, and like Aaron mentioned, we probably have indoor center. So we're able to hold that off a little bit to the school's benefit for the community. So that's a wonderful thing for that community. And then just an update too, on Monday, the common period closed, a forty-five day review period for the panel of providing facilities plan, area plan. And it's attached, uh, climate action plan. That, we received like three comments, which were not unanticipated regarding air quality. We knew that. We have gas emissions. We knew that. Water quality. We knew that. So we feel it's all pretty addressed and now we just, you know, formulate a response to those to keep the project moving forward. So we are just getting a couple more comments from the air district. We need a few more days. And one of the regional water quality control board, their step over negotiations, he wasn't gonna give to us, they're not gonna have to record it. But other than that, we did receive comments that we anticipated to receive and, and, and they were, they were raised just like I thought they were gonna be. And we're gonna be your opportunity to provide a response.
We can't hear the public works and everything. I guess I'd like to emphasize kind of invert it from them, but it's this, uh, business approach that we're taking. And from a public works perspective, we were implementing that as some routine work with the planning department. But also through projects that, um, can focus on economic development, which is, um. And a couple of examples of that are some water projects, um, we're gonna have a system for drought, that's a major issue. But we've got a well and water distribution system that will be, um, hopefully constructed here late summer in Monson. And then, um, a, a sewer infrastructure improvements and trailer that will hopefully allow for some increased development in that area as well. As far as other areas, we do some feasibility studies with the planning department. How about Alan's work as far as water treatments and improvements there for drinking water? They tracked sewer feasibility study and the plant feed, other sewer feasibility. drinking water, main tract, um, super feasibility study, and then plenty of other super feasibility study for getting those people off of their individual septic and creating some sort of a community system that will allow future development in those areas. Um, as far as our community transportation projects, we're focusing no longer just on the, the main, um, agricultural overlay type projects that we've done, I think quite well, had in previous years. What we're looking at, we're missing within, uh, these sulfur glitter sidewalks, um, safe routes to school projects, active transportation, kind of the new, uh, the new, uh, funding sources for sidewalks, which is, um, alternative methods of transportation by routes, that's where maybe using off the, from the streets that we're living in the past few years. Um, so we're really focusing on the, the types of projects that can potentially , uh, develop those regions. Um, I do have a list, uh, we're getting into the, the construction part, or the construction video of the year here. Uh, we didn't quite have the element that we were hoping for, but, um, hopefully it's not quite over yet, but we're really ramping up with some construction projects. Um, we have a sidewalk and bus route, a stop project and two new billboards for seven, which is like just an extra, that's in construction currently. Um, the sidewalk project in Terra Bella, that's gonna be done in the first, hopefully the first part made. Um, our Deer Creek Bridge project, uh, on Road 224, uh, South Corbville area, that'll be completed in April thirtieth, and we're looking for, uh, third, ninth, seventh, and eighth, and first, making management's balance for our bridge project for us. We've done well. Um, just finished a, a bridge on Deep Creek, Route 182, um, well, uh, as part of our bridge program, we're really looking to systematically go throughout the county's bridges and, and, um, there's a federal source that we've been very successful in utilizing to get those bridges, uh, rehabilitated, increased in size, capacity, and also we were, uh, flooding capacity, margin, like draft, so we're potentially eliminating future flooding in those areas. We've got a number of AC overlay projects. Um, I can say we're focusing on communities, but we're not meeting the farm-to-market type roads, so we've got, uh, probably about five hundred dollars worth of DC overlays that are in various stages of construction right now. Um, one of the cells of the Vicellia landfill, which has not been active for a number of years, is finally being closed. So all these departments, um, leading that, or assisting that with construction on that. So that's a, a good project to finish off with the regulatory requirements of the landfill there. Um, we're doing a, a safety improvement project on well over fifty intersections throughout the county. Um, these are stop-controlled intersections that will be increasing the size of the stop signs, in some locations, putting, uh, solar powered flashing beacons for advanced warning, you can see the stop signs. These were all identified through, uh, a systematic safety process, leaving locations where we got higher than average accident histories. So we're hoping that, uh, we can reduce some of that, that accident potential, uh, throughout the county. Um, we're working on a roadway widening on Road 108, uh, um, just to the north of Vicellia here. Um, that'll be starting , uh, beginning of April. And a 416 roadway in project between D'Aduba and the Fresno County line is moving forward quite well. We're, um, pretty much done with clearing and grubbing, taking out, um, all the properties that fire and the trees been moved. So our next step there is to relocate the utility poles, and then hopefully by the end of this year, so there's a lot of construction on that. If you have any questions or, um, there are any areas or concerns that you'd like us to take a look at, and if you're available.
On the Plainview project, that community water system, is that federally funded, or I mean, the grant situation on that?
Not bad for five years, huh?
For the sewer?
They're on, uh, private water farms off of my, and it will be a sewer connection. It's set up through, uh, the state's federal hand.
You're in a knife fight.
How many connections are we talking about there?
Um, I believe it's about fifty or so. I probably don't quote me on that number, but, uh, it's in that range.
Okay, I won't.
Shred those, or do you have to blend them?
Two hundred? Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Very wide, you have to shred them?
I think they have three wells, so fifty beacons.
I'd like to see the water quality on that place.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. We have a planning commission discussion items and request for future agenda items. No action other than discussion and referral to a future meeting.
I just wanted to make a comment about the, we changed the date on the CCPCA annual, and it had to go from October 21st, a week earlier, so I guess it'd be the 14th, it'd be the, whatever the Friday is. And, but there is some amazing news. We booked into the Mission Inn in Riverside. So it's gonna be the conference headquarters. It's totally refurbished.
It is.
It's in the top ten hotels of all of Southern California.
Great place.
So it's looking like it's gonna be, you better reserve your room early. So, 'cause there's, there's a block of fifty put aside, and if we get an early response, then we'll add another block. But we have to move quickly because it's a, especially not so much the Thursday night, but the Friday, Saturday nights are busy.
You'll send us some emails and contacts and stuff?
Yeah, all that stuff will be coming. The, um, we just got, uh, the, uh, planning director and the planning commissioner, that's the chair for Riverside County, they sent an email out, and it started out, as you may know, John Elliott talked us into having the conference this year. So I thought that's, that bodes pretty well because they're into it, and it's gonna be a wonderful show.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Tulare County Planning Commission to reconvene on April 13th, 2016, at nine o'clock.
And I may not be here that, uh, day. I, I will try...